This meeting is being televised live on cable access Channel 9. It is being taped by PBD Access Television and is also being recorded by our City Council stenographer. Please join me in a moment of silence. Very briefly, I just want to state that Counselor Rozignol expresses his regret for not being here. Fortunately, he's moving his youngest into college this evening, which I don't think any of us would miss. So congratulations to Christina, who's enrolled at Quinnipiac University. So let's move to Item 4A on the agenda. The clerk will read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Peabody, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, August 22nd, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., on the application from AAA Northeast, 110 Royal Little Drive, Providence, Rhode Island, for a special permit seeking to operate a trucking terminal with truck repair and maintenance service with no outdoor storage at 7 Lakeland Park Drive, Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 6.6.4B, 6.1, 11, and 12, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. The matter is remanded from a new hearing by the Land Court, Spiker J., by an order dated June 12th, 2019, in the case entitled AAA versus PBD City Council, Land Court, Docket 19 MISC 000083. PBD City Council, Counselor John Turco.
Thank you, sir. Could you please state your name and address for the record and tell us what you'd like to do?
Yes, good evening. My name is Bill Squires. I'm a partner with the law firm of Hinckley Allen in Boston, and I represent the applicant AAA Northeast. I have a number of people here with me tonight. Only two are expected to speak, including Jeff Dirk, the traffic engineer from Vaness Associates, and John Galvin, the president and CEO of AAA. As you just heard, AAA Northeast is seeking a special permit to operate a trucking terminal with truck repair and maintenance services with no outdoor storage at 7 Lakeland Park You first heard this matter on January 24th of this year. Prior to that, and I'm sorry, you heard this, we filed the application in mid-December of 2018. You had received at the time either recommendation or no objection letters from Community Development and Planning, Fire Department, Public Services Department, and the Conservation Commission. The City Council voted that night to deny the special permit, and on February 1st, you issued a written decision and filed it with the city clerk. AAA filed a complaint in Land Court on February 15th, under Chapter 40A, Section 17. Then on June 11th of 2019, the City Council and AAA jointly filed a motion with the Land Court to remand the case here with the court retaining jurisdiction. The next day, on June 12th, the court issued an order. The order remanded the matter to the City Council for a new hearing on the original application which we filed in December. That order contemplated that AAA would submit a traffic impact assessment to you and that you would retain a traffic engineer to do a peer review. The court retained jurisdiction, so what that means is if you grant the special permit tonight, the case would be dismissed, and if you do not grant the special permit tonight, we'll be back in Land Court, and AAA will have 20 days to file an amended complaint. Since then, AAA, as you may recall, the property 7 Lakeland Park Drive was under a purchase agreement at the time you first heard this matter in January. On July 9th, AAA closed on that purchase, so it's now the fee owner of the property. We submitted a traffic impact assessment to you, prepared by Vaness Associates, on June 18th. I'll be brief, and I will let Jeff Dirk from Vaness talk about that in more detail. The traffic impact assessment found that project-related traffic to the study area intersections is not predicted to result in a change of level of service or a significant increase in vehicle queuing. I was rewatching the video of the January 24th hearing, and I kept hearing trucks. There's going to be trucks, trucks, more trucks, trucks. I just want to clarify that there are 35 service vehicles for this location. Six of them will be flatbed trucks, relatively small.
Attorney Squires, if you don't mind, if I could, I'd like to see if there's anybody in the audience, in the public, that would like to speak in favor of your petition?
Okay.
And then in opposition, and then you could continue with the nitty-gritty of it. And I apologize for interrupting. Did you want him to continue, Counselor? I thought maybe we'd let him give the whole synopsis of the permit after we open that up to the public.
I think in respect to the public that's here, they should hear his entire presentation in case there's some things that they disagree with, rather than having them going up and back.
Okay. We'll do it that way. Generally, we just get a brief synopsis, and then we open it up, you know, all in favor. I mean, excuse me, for those that would like to speak in favor and opposition, but we can hear the whole permit if you'd like. Continue, my apologies.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, there are 35 vehicles that will be dispatched from this facility. Only six of them are flatbed trucks. The other 29 are variations on Ford F-150s. There will be 16 light-duty trucks. These are the trucks that go out and charge batteries or replace batteries. And then there'll be 13 F-150s that are reinforced with an extra axle that will be used for light towing. So the traffic impact assessment was peer-reviewed by Bayside Engineering, the city's peer-review expert. Bayside concurred with Vaness Associates' findings in the traffic impact assessment, subject to responding to certain comments in that letter. On August 14th, we submitted a letter responding to all of Bayside's comments. And I'd just like to point out as well that the, when compared to the other uses that are allowed as of right at this property, which includes transfer stations, which would have, as you know, from other transfer stations in the area, a number, possibly countless number of tractor-trailers and other large trucks coming in, from a traffic consideration, I think the AAA use is actually the ideal use for this location. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff Dirk from Vaness Associates, who will talk with you in a little more detail about his findings.
Sir, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk. I'm a partner with Vaness and Associates, and we have a place of business in Andover, Massachusetts. So thank you, Council President, Counselors. I'm gonna, I'll be brief, because as I understand, I want to hear from the public relative to the project. Certainly, I'm sure there's a lot of detailed questions regarding the traffic study, and I would certainly be able to answer those for you. And I think the attorney did a good job in kind of summarizing the work effort that we had undertaken as a part of the traffic study. So we had submitted, as you are aware, a traffic study in, or transportation impact assessment in June that went out for peer review. The study that, the study area that we had looked at in that original June traffic study consisted of Forest Street, Lakeland Park Drive, and two specific intersections. It was Route 1 at Forest Street and Lakeland Park Drive at Forest Street. Your review consultant had asked us as well to look at Farm Avenue, to see what the impacts of the project may be at that location itself. As we're looking at impacts on the project, the important thing that we're considering is the amount of traffic that this project is projected to add on the roadway network. And you heard the attorney talk about the types of trips that, or types of vehicles that we're talking about. I think the important thing as well is to kind of step back and to think about AAA's operations. So in terms of how we look at the traffic impacts of the project, traditionally, what I'd be presenting to you is impacts during the commuter peak hours. So this is when people are going to work in the morning and when they're coming back in the evening. The important distinction about AAA's operations is they actually have to be on the road when we're all going to and from work. And the reason for that is because they're servicing us all as we have breakdowns, flat tires, our batteries die as we're trying to start our cars, either coming, going to work or coming home. So the important thing to think about when the traffic from this project is actually realized on the roadway network is it's not during the commuter peak hours. And it's not during those peak hours when the FedEx trucks might be leaving Lakeland Park Drive. It's actually happening before that or after that, and the reason is because they need the service technicians to be on the road. And I think we're all familiar, as we're driving on the roads, we see them out there servicing or waiting to service the vehicles. So from the standpoint of the impacts that this project is going to have during those traditional peak hours, we're talking about 20 vehicle trips over the course of an hour. So that's one additional vehicle every three minutes during the peak periods. And that's the reason why, as the attorney had mentioned, as we look at the impacts in this project, and about 70% of the traffic in this project is headed towards Route 1. So it's coming off Forest Street, making a right-hand turn, and then traveling north on Route 1. 30% of the traffic would be heading down Farm Avenue to be able to service the area, 128 Interstate 95 down in that area there. So as we're talking about 20 trips over the course of an hour, we add it to these three intersections and disperse it onto the roadways. That's why what we're talking about in terms of impacts is you don't see any changes in levels of service. So the delay increases that occur at any one of the three intersections is, does not rise to a level where it is perceivable. And that is also measured by the vehicle queuing at the intersections. So what we reported at Lakeland Park Drive and at Farm Avenue is that if there's one or two vehicles out there today in queue, and that's what we had actually measured out there, that isn't going to change. 20 vehicles over the course of an hour added to those intersections doesn't change the queuing that happens there. We're all very well aware that there is queuing approaching Route 1, and that's a fact. That exists out there today. It will exist out there in the future. As we're adding the 20 additional vehicles over the course of the hour, and again, some of it's going right and heading down Farm Avenue with a small percentage, some of it, the majority of it, 70%, is heading up towards Route 1, it doesn't rise to the level, whereas if you look at that queue over the course of an hour, I mean, vehicles are processed, they get out onto Route 1, albeit slowly. As we measure the queuing that happens as a result of the project's traffic, you don't see any change in terms of the queuing. So what that says is the project's going to add traffic, but it doesn't result in any material increase in queuing. The net increase in queuing on the approach to Route 1 is approximately one to two vehicles. The other important thing that we look at in the traffic study, it's not just how this project's going to impact delays in queuing, it's safety. And I know that's very concerning of the City Council. It's very important to us as traffic engineers. We don't want to add traffic to locations that are known safety issues. So we looked at a couple of different data points with respect to safety. The first data point we look at is mass DOT crash data, and the importance of that is it's basically all of the crash records that are reported, not only from the city police department, but also the state police. Given the fact that we've got an interaction with Route 1, state police, I'm sorry, the state police are responding to the crashes that are happening out at that location. So that's an important data point as well. But just as important is the city police department data. So we collected through mass DOT five years' worth of crash data, and then we validated that with five years of crash data from the City of Peabody Police Department, who was very gracious in not only providing to us the number of crashes, but also the physical crash reports. And the crash reports are very important because we want to understand where there are crashes happening, what are the causes of those crashes, and are they attributable either to a specific safety defect that we want to look at to see if we can take corrective action, or is it driver error? And that's another thing that we look at as well. So as we looked at both the mass DOT data and the Peabody Police Department data, they actually correlated very well. So we didn't find any differences in terms of the data. The only difference we found was that, of course, at the Route 1 intersection, the city data didn't have the state police data. So as we looked at that data, there were no crashes reported through the City of Peabody Police Department over the past five years at Lakeland Park Drive. So as we looked at how that intersection operates, and then we look at the safety of the historical safety data at that intersection, there were no crashes reported over a five-year time period based on the city's police department records. So those two things, looking at it, indicated to us there's not a safety deficiency with respect to either how the intersection's operated or historically how people are actually using that intersection. As we looked at the Farm Avenue intersection, there was one crash over five years, based on both the mass DOT data and the city police department data. And again, one crash over a five-year time period based on the volume of traffic going through that intersection was not considered to be significant, and the city police department also concurred with that finding. So now shifting ourselves down to the Route 1 intersection with Forest Street. Over a five-year time period, based on a combination of the city police department data and the mass DOT data, there were 12 crashes reported at that intersection over a five-year time period. The crash rate that we look at at that intersection, and we look at the crash rate to determine if the number of crashes that are happening is disproportionate to the mass DOT average. So mass DOT calculates crash rates throughout the state, so at a unsignaled intersection, similar to what we have on Route 1, we're able to look at the state's average crash rate for similar intersections and compare that to the actual crash rate at that location based on the volume of traffic. And what we found was 12 crashes at that intersection over a five-year time period did not result in a crash rate that was anywhere near the state average, indicating that the number of crashes that's happening is not disproportionate to the volume of traffic going through the intersection. As I mentioned, the city police department data, we were actually able to obtain the crash reports as well, because similar to what the attorney had mentioned, I wanted to make sure that, obviously, as I'm coming to present to you, I was prepared not only with the data that I collected, but also to have an understanding of what your concerns were at the last hearing that you had on this project where the special permit was denied. And I know the Route 1 intersection was a significant focus of those conversations. So as we looked at the crash records at that intersection, and I also spent a couple of days, maybe an hour to 30 minutes each of the couple of times I was out there, sitting at that intersection in Red's parking lot, watching the dynamics of the traffic flow at that location, because as I understand, the important thing was obviously the truck turns and how people are using the breakdown lanes, looking at the businesses on either side of that intersection to see what that interaction is. Because again, the data is saying to us there are delays in this queuing that happens. There are crashes that are happening, but the number of crashes aren't, is not disproportionate to either the state average or the volume of traffic going through the intersection. So we also wanted to understand what is the cause of the crashes that are occurring at that location. So looking at the actual crash reports that were put together by the police department, what we found is the majority of the crashes were attributable to driver error. So there were a lot of single-vehicle crashes at that location. There were some crashes that were all actually involved with vehicles backing up because someone had missed a turn and were trying to go into one of businesses. Again, nothing related to the geometry of that intersection. The most significant number of crashes there, and again, there were only 12, if we looked at that, maybe five of those crashes were related to the typical situations that you would have on a right-in, right-out driveway where you've got basically high-speed traffic like you have on Route 1, where if you're the driver and you're next in line and there's someone in front of you, especially when you have those long queues there, I'm looking over my shoulder to my left to watch the traffic that's approaching me on Route 1, and I'm thinking the driver in front of me actually merged into traffic when, in fact, they didn't. So what you see in terms of the crash patterns are low-speed rear-end crashes resulting from, you thought the guy in front of you went, or the person in front of you went, and they actually didn't, and there's a fender bender. So those are the type of crashes that are happening at the intersection, and I think the important thing as we look at that is, yes, what I observed out there is that if there's an 18-wheeler trying to make the turn there, they're swinging the center line, and that's very distinct, that that happens out there. But I think the important thing in looking at that, that's going to continue to occur, although there are opportunities to make some geometric improvements out there, and I think the city's installing some waterline improvements out there. There were some very easy things with respect to some pavement markings and some curb-line adjustments that could be done as a part of that project. But I think the important thing as we looked at the data there is that condition that exists today and will exist in the future independent of this project was not resulting in any crashes occurring at that intersection. None of the crash reports indicated that a vehicle swinging wide at that intersection and crossing the center line was the result of motor vehicle crashes occurring at that intersection. Again, that's very important as we're looking at the impacts from this project. So I guess I have not been as brief as I had said I would be, but I did want to provide just a little bit more background, because I know that's going to elicit some questions and comments, and I just wanted to kind of put the information out there so at least you understood the information that I have available to me, so I'd be able to answer the questions that you might have. So I appreciate your indulgence.
Thank you, sir.
So as I mentioned, John Galvin, the president and CEO of AAA Northeast, would like to say a few words about their operations and why this is an important location. As I think you may know, AAA Northeast is located in six states, has millions of members, and has many locations. And the one thing I learned tonight, which I think really emphasizes the importance of this location for AAA, is this is John's first special permit hearing of any kind, despite all those locations. So I'll hand it off to John.
Sir, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Happy to. John Galvin, Jeffrey Drive, North Attleboro, Massachusetts. Thank you. AAA Northeast is part of the AAA Federation, they call it. We are a not-for-profit organization. We don't really have owners. We exist to serve our members. Our particular territory is most of Mass., all of Rhode Island, most of Connecticut, Long Island, the five boroughs of New York, up to Utica, as well as North Jersey. We have roughly 5.7 million members, a little more than that. In the state of Massachusetts, we have roughly 2.4 million members. 42% of the population of Massachusetts over the age of 15 are currently members. In Peabody, 52% of the population over the age 18, over age 18 are members of AAA. As a not-for-profit organization, we really exist to serve our members, right? So when we look at locations to place fleet, and I should start off by saying, we do have fleet operations, that's what we're talking about this evening. In Massachusetts, last year, we did 1.3 million roadside assists. So 1.3 million times in the state of Massachusetts last year, one of our vehicles came up to a disabled vehicle and helped it. 60% of the time, we get it going. 40% of the time, we have to take it away. Most of them can be done by toes. Some vehicles can't be towed, they have to be put on a flatbed, and some vehicles, because of the nature of the damage to them, have to be put on a flatbed. What we're, you know, we're very, we've got 3,300 employees. We've got a significant number of employees in Massachusetts and Rhode Island are the two heaviest concentrations. We're a very charitable organization because we are a not-for-profit. We're not profit-driven. We, again, exist to serve members. We focus an awful lot of energy and effort on public-private partnerships. The most known in Massachusetts would be the registry. So we do registry services in several, 22 states nationwide. Our club does it in three, two primary. This year, we'll do 580,000 registry transactions for the state of Massachusetts and the state of Rhode Island combined. We get paid a whopping zero by the state for those services. We don't get a dime. We don't take a dime. We do it as part of our mission as an organization, to be a good organization, a charitable organization, and to serve our members in the state. I'll use, I can have many examples, and I could be here for a long time, and I won't bore you. Another kind of recent example of an initiative we did, we do a lot of training and education and research around traffic safety. Traffic safety is a core issue to the organization. Marijuana or cannabis is now legal in Massachusetts, and it's likely to become legal in all the states we operate in. We developed a curriculum to teach teens the risks of driving while high. We rolled it out in January in Rhode Island in conjunction with Brown University's Department of Public Health to look at the science around how the brain is affected by impairment related to cannabis use. We're now rolling it out in September and beyond in every, hopefully, every school we can. In Rhode Island, we were fortunate enough to be able to hit every school. We trained over 3,000 students in a five-month period. We want to now do it in every state we're in. So as an organization, we're very committed to the communities we exist in, and we're very committed to being a good citizen and making sure that we're giving back to the community in a very significant way. As we look at this particular location and why, we study where we have to perform services. So in our business, it's a pretty simple business. I'm not the brightest bulb in the world, so it's pretty easy for me to be CEO. You don't have to be very bright. Common sense will get you through 90% of my job, right? You put the locations where you're getting most of the traffic and where you can get to the traffic and to the breakdowns the quickest. Our fleet operations only handle about 20% of all the calls we do. We're very committed to local businesses and to contractors. We love contractors. We don't want to see any contractors go out of business. We don't want to take calls away from any contractors. As a matter of fact, we'd like all of you, your cousins, your aunts, your uncles, your sisters, brothers, and neighbors, to open contractor businesses and call us, because we love to work with contractors. No part of this is to take it away, but they're facing difficult challenges in their industry. Insurance costs have risen, and the introduction of Amazon and Amazon Fleets take away a lot of labor and also increase labor costs for the contractors. We are a business that's been around for 116 years. We're financially quite viable, but we don't touch Jeff Bezos and the money Amazon has. So their ability to compete for drivers and increase costs for contractors is pretty significant. It makes that business difficult. But let me be clear, under no circumstances are we doing this to take work away from contractors. Nothing could be farther from the truth. We have a fleet operation in North Andover. We would be relocating most of the staff there here to be able to get closer to where the calls are, so we get to the scene quicker. I know your concern was regarding traffic, and I found that fascinating. It's one of the reasons I wanted to come tonight. And I think, you know, our consultant did a very good job in a traffic study and made it very clear that our being here will not cause incremental traffic, and we won't. And again, my job's easy. It's common sense. We get on the road, our people come to work before this traffic, so they're on the road when the traffic happens. We do shift changes, because we operate 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, in all forms of weather. We do shift changes when there's not a lot of traffic, because I don't want my employees not showing up and not being out on the road when the traffic hits. So we don't impact traffic anywhere, really anywhere in the country. We're certainly not going to do it here. The other issue with traffic is, you think about it, when cars break down, and again, we did one point, roughly 1.3 million roadside assists last year in the state of Massachusetts, what happens is the cars behind them back up. Car breaks in a bad spot, right? Traffic is created. We eliminate the traffic. We go and move the car that's blocking the traffic. So if you want to have less traffic, in theory, you'd want us to be in your town, because the closer we are to where the incidents happen, the quicker we're going to get there to be able to alleviate traffic concerns. So I can't see that. I mean, I think our engineer did a very good job. I think it's very clear there's no traffic concerns, and I think common sense would also tell you, hey, man, we're the best thing that ever happened to traffic. We'd take the cars away 1.3 million times a year in Massachusetts, removing traffic impediments to any community that we're in. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but at the end of the day, this is very important to us. We exist to serve our members. More than half the kind of voting citizens of Peabody are members of AAA, 42% of the state. We're going to continue to be very charitable. We're going to be, continue to be very active in the community. We are, you know, we have charitable giving communities among our employees who decide where our charitable giving happens. It happens in those communities where we happen to have a physical presence, and the employees decide what local charities we support. So I think we would be a very good neighbor. I know we would. We are in 100 other locations throughout our footprint. We're very committed to serving the members in Peabody and serving the members in Massachusetts and continuing to grow our business here. So I hope that you can find it to approve this, so we can begin to transition and serve members more efficiently and more effectively in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galvin.
That's the end of our presentation. I know the City Council and the public probably have questions that we're here to answer, but we ask that the City Council vote to grant the special permit tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor?
Please state your name and address for the record. My name is Russell Donovan, 12 Coyle Road. For the record, I am a AAA member. This is not a choice of the lesser of two evils. This is a perfect choice for a beautiful location. You couldn't ask for a better tenant or owner of that property than AAA. They express it very well. We've down here on Route 1, we all know the traffic. We know the jargon, we know the traffic. This is a solution, not a problem. The City Council made a mistake earlier. Correct it. Approve the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Anybody else in the audience here to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anybody here in the audience to speak in opposition? Come right to the podium. Anybody that would like to speak in opposition, you could stand up at the podium. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Larry Alcott, and I live at 269 Forest Street. You know, the first thing I want to say is the traffic study, I believe, is flawed. I've been there about five or six years, and there's been at least five accidents at that intersection in the time I've been there. One of them, I was the first one on the scene at where a young man got hurt. Another one, a truck came down the street and took out poles all the way down the street. So I don't know, you know, where they got the accident reports from, but there's been more than, there's been more than one accident in the last five years. I live directly across the street from Lakeland Park Drive, and as it stands now... I live directly across the street from Lakeland Park Drive, and as it stands now, when I'm in bed at night, I'm being woken up by vehicles coming down the street all night long. We have a motorcycle place down at the end of the street, and they're using the motorcycle, they're using the street for Speedway. You know, there's kids coming out of there using that street as a racetrack. You know, and it just goes on and on and on. I mean, all night long, I'm just, you know, and the last thing I want to see is more vehicles. The last time, they said that they had a report that they had, I don't know, they were going to park 40 vehicles in that lot, now they're saying basically the same thing. They don't have enough room in that lot. I don't know if they really, I don't know who took the measurements and stuff, but there's no way you're going to get 40 vehicles parked inside of that lot. In respect to the, you know, the times that they're going to be leaving and things like that, I mean, as far as in respect to the traffic study, it was done while we're not in school, for one thing. The school buses haven't started rolling yet, and that's going to cause a traffic problem all by itself. It's also rumored that there's going to be, they're going to be opening up the landfill again. I mean, I don't know if that's true or not, but there's rumors about it. I don't think that they took into consideration Expediters, which just opened up, and we haven't even seen the traffic from that place yet. You know, so what's right is right, I mean, but, you know, and I'm not against AAA, but I mean, and the other thing is, is I, you know, I heard him say they closed on the purchase and sale of the building. I don't know why they would do that before they had the, before they had the permits. I mean, that doesn't make any sense at all to me. But, you know, I'm just saying, as a neighbor, living on that street, I have problems with it now as it is, with trucks coming in and out of there all hours of the night. And the other thing is Lakeland Park Drive works six days a week, they're not open on Sundays. So they're going to, now you're asking to put a business in there that's going to operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You know, I'm not saying AAA shouldn't come to PBD, but there's other locations that are better suited, that's all I'm saying. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Alcott. Anybody else to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nicholas Michael Manus at 252 Forest Street, lifelong resident of PBD. I'm not against big business, but there's a lot of traffic as it is, pulling out of Forest Street onto Route 1 because of the 18-wheelers at Reds, for example. And I see cars going into a mobile gas station to get onto Route 1 instead of going the legal way, because there's a backup of traffic. And I thought about doing it myself. Also, I, you know, I have a 10-year-old that's going to be starting in the fifth grade at South Memorial, and we normally wait on Farm Avenue on the corner of Farm Avenue and Forest Street at roughly 20 past 8:00. So in a couple of weeks, school's going to start for him. So that's mainly, the main opposition I have for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manus. Anybody else to speak in opposition of this permit?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Butler.
My name is Tom Butler from 440 Jubilee Drive. I am a AAA member, and so is everyone in my family. I would like to speak in opposition. Before I do, I would like to preface my comments with a short story that's worth bringing up. A few years ago, I was talking to the captain of a football team, Vassity Football Team, and I said, "I'm going to come see you guys play tonight." And he said to me, "Oh, Mr. Butler, you don't want to come, we're terrible." I said, "What do you mean? You're the captain of the team, you can't say that." He said, "That doesn't matter, we're not doing very well at all." And I had to review the purpose of high school sports. It's not to win or lose, even though we all believe that. It's to build character and development and discipline, and those can only come during difficult times. So a losing team actually is kind of a good thing, even though we don't want to have our kids go through that. And I bring this up because I thought I might go back to what the DDD was created for, because it's become something other than what it now is. It was created with great fanfare, and I want to say, when you look at the city, how it's carved up in zones, Industrial Park is different than the DDD. They have different expectations, as all the zones do. So when the DDD was created back in the heyday of the 80s, what did we expect? Well, I think I'll read off the ordinances for you. "To provide professional uses like office and research and development, and light manufacturing, as well as support services like hotels, and restaurants, and shopping, and recreational facilities. Development should facilitate creative and integrated physical designs which are compatible with the natural environment, which promotes the overall improvement of the urban environment." This is our zoning. And then it goes on to say, "We would like to have things like corporate headquarters, high and advanced technology, research and development, medical facilities, light manufacturing." By the way, that's what was in this building that AAA wants to go in, light manufacturing. "And outdoor recreation, business support services like FedEx, recycling, printing, hotels, restaurants, commercial, retail, daycare, personnel services establishments, indoor recreation." And at last, of course, trucking terminals and truck services, which the applicant is applying for. When I review the DDD, with the exception of Dearborn Road, which is now going into almost an overlay district of residential, the vast majority of the DDD today has become trucks and truck services, whether it be Shanker, Expediters, the Fish Plant, and all along the road, there's just trucks. Somehow, along the way, the vision for the DDD got lost. And so at the end of all of this, it does say that the city council has the authority to make sure that this kind of development doesn't happen. I would really like to see some light manufacturing win there, or maybe some research and development. But I don't think that more trucks are the answer. I know my neighbors feel the same way. Sitting at 2:30, quarter, 3:00 in the morning, we have the trash trucks, which, by the way, are in the DDD. The entire trash facility north of Boston comes to PBD, and also east of PBD, Salem, they close theirs, we get them all. So they come down the street all day long. We have a lot of trucks, and I suppose that's the way we have to live with it. But I don't think we need to have more trucks, 24/7, by the way, as has been pointed out, on Sundays, which is usually a nice day in our neighborhood. We don't have the pounding of trucks. How about some medical facilities? Are we lowering our expectations for our city? Are we only good enough for trucks? Is that all we're good for now? I think we can do a lot better than this, and I would like to at least end by saying what it says here in our own zoning. Excuse me while I find it, if I can. "To establish site-specific performance standards to regulate impacts to the carrying capacity of the land and the municipal facilities." I think ours are replete with trucks. We're overflowing with them, and I don't think we need any more. Thank you, council.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Come right up, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Bill Sullivan, Boston, Mass. I have a handout.
Can I get a motion to receive?
Motion to receive.
Oh, in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
I'm representing FedEx at this time. In this packet, you'll see the previous landlord has sold since this last meeting, and he put his concerns in letter to us, letting us know what's, what his opinion is, letting him know what his opinion is. I'm the senior manager of FedEx, I've been with FedEx 36 years. I was promoted up to Lakeland Park Drive 28 years ago. I use the theory you can't hit a moving target, so I've been in Framingham, Boston, you name it, all over the country. Now I'm back in PBD, and now I can see the impact of what's going on in this neighborhood. I have 66 total pickup and delivery routes there. I don't have tractor-trailers stored on my property. I make my trailers sit in a yard down in Rivera, Chelsea, and my employees get down there and get them, then go to Logan Airport, so not to impact more traffic on the street. I have a total of 106 employees. Approximately 25% live in the immediate PBD city limits. There's a hint at the end of your packet I'll refer to later, okay? Neighborhood concerns, the root concerns of the neighborhood start with, on Forest Street at the entrance. If you're coming up north, any tractor-trailer that's going to take a right by Reds has to go into the incoming traffic coming down Route 1, coming down Forest Street. Pedestrian safety, I think it's crazy, there's no sidewalk on that street, right? I come from the city, and I walk out the door in the office downtown, I can grab something to eat. You get onto Forest Street, you're done. I tried it once, I won't do it again, okay? There's multiple heavy equipment operating companies, all within 1/10 of a mile radius, 1/10 around the immediate area, Lakeland Park, Forest Street, and Farm Street. And ironically, Lakeland Park Drive is 579 feet long. That's, that's less than two football fields. I'm going, are you kidding me? Well, let's, let's add more to it. It's crazy. I listed the amount of businesses in the area with a concern, and I even listed myself, okay? But I, every community I've worked in, this isn't the first time I've been in front of a city council, we're always proactive. I listed the eight companies that are there already, not AAA, because I figure if there's 40, if there's 40 vehicles, there's 40 cars, okay? So now we've got 80. And continuous shifts, they don't know what time I start. I'm glad to hear roughly that they're, I knew they'd be 24/7, 365, but we have rotating shifts as well. And then I just put down, safety would be compromised during the month of August. We have a great relationship with the city of PBD, the engineering department, I listed his name there, William Pults, made some serious accommodations while he was doing the water piping on Forest Street, so I could get my trailers in and out. He did some great adjustments. Every year, no matter where I'm at, I bring in the first responders, the folks in PBD, the fire, the police, and the ambulance service. They were overwhelmed, and they kept on bringing more shifts, calling up, each shift, each different houses in case they knew. I wanted to share information with them, show them where our hotspots are in the warehouse. I mean, we don't carry, we ship dangerous goods, we don't store dangerous goods. We showed them the areas, what we have, they have it all on computer now for response time and everything. And unfortunately, I had to call them today, because I had an employee take sick in the heat, and they transported them out. So we've been really happy with the service we've got from the city of PBD. I just think, in conclusion, FedEx has had a long-lasting business experience here, in that park for 33 years, okay? You know, we come and go, we don't raise any noise, we follow anything, any instructions we've ever been given. I just want the council to take into our considerations about reinvesting here all these years. FedEx's current lease expires in 2022. We are considering to renew the lease unless, okay? We are mobile as a company, we're not fragile. So if this, this comes in and it starts impacting my operation, I'm not, you know, you never know, okay? I just want it to be known, I have a new landlord, I told him I wasn't speaking on his behalf, I can speak for myself and FedEx, and you see the letter that he submitted to as well. I appreciate the opportunity, sir, to come in front of you folks, and I left a little hint on the back of that thing for some of the folks in the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Is anybody else here in the audience to speak in opposition? Mr. Wood, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Robert John Wood, 278 Forest Street, and I also own the building at 13 Lakeland Park Drive. I had asked my ward counselor back two months ago to put up no parking signs on Lakeland Park Drive on both sides, because the tractor-trailers that were parking there overnight, and then Beacon approached me, Smart Works, and FedEx, because they'd park on both sides of the road and would make it very dangerous. You'd have to wait for one car to come out, or one truck to come out, and then you could enter Lakeland Park Drive. I want to thank the city council for making that happen, to make the place a little safer for the people that come in, the 100 employees of FedEx, JRM, and Elsway. But the thing is that I want to bring up, when I bought my land in '95 at the auction, we all got a big booklet of the rules of the park, all right? And I'm sure that AAA did not look at those things, because it was never passed on from the previous owner, because I helped the previous owner get the okay to go through the office building parking lot into detention pond, but that was never passed on. I plowed the road, I patched the road at my own expense, I cleaned the catch basins at my own expense to keep the detention pond area clean, so we do not have to go in and dig it out. All I'm pointing out is that these people did not do their homework when they bought that building, and they should come up, and I can copy everything for them, so that they know what they're liable for. Jimmy Monchkin did when I told them, the Beacon owner knows, and everything else, so I just want to bring it up. Sundays, basically, there's no truck traffic on Lakeland Park Drive. I police the area, if there's a stranger walking, I look at the buildings, because I live right at 278. We've got cameras that we follow things, but I just want to bring up, I don't think we need any more traffic with the young kids that are going to be going up Jubilee Drive to Farm Ave, to Forest Street, to go to PBD High in the morning. If you are out there, you can see the traffic back up to Lakeland Park Drive, waiting to get onto Route 1. And I think it's more of a safety concern for the younger people that are just getting their licenses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is anybody else in the audience here to speak in opposition? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Anybody else to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Council Sasso.
Thank you, Council President. Under suspension of rules, motion to receive item 8J and item 8T.
Oh, in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
So first, I'd like to thank FedEx and the neighbors for coming out tonight, taking time out of your personal schedule for this important issue. I think one of the things, if I could get across to Mr. Galvin and Mr. Squires, I think there's a little bit of a miscommunication, you know, while traffic certainly is an issue, to me, it's not traffic, it's safety. It's the safety of the area. You can have limited amounts of traffic, but if you have a high safety factor or unsafe factor, it doesn't matter how much traffic you have, because it's unsafe. I didn't cause it, you didn't cause it, it's just the reality of the situation. The area is just a high, dense area. If you look at the packet that we received from Mr. Sullivan from FedEx, he took the time to do a Google map, highlights all the businesses that are in the area, heavy, heavy trucking businesses, things of that nature. But when I looked at your traffic study, can I ask you, attorney, what was the time period of the traffic study that you had done on your behalf?
It was in, I'm sorry, it was in February, I think mid-February, and there was an adjustment upward, because traffic is higher, the traffic in February is slightly below the average monthly.
What was the time period of the traffic study?
A two-day period.
48 hours, right. And so the interesting aspect is that someone brought up school vacation, might have been, might have not been.
It was not.
It was not, but that, to me, is inconsequential, because what's important to me is that people talk about, I think your traffic engineer talked about sitting out there and watching the traffic over a brief period of time. Well, I've watched the traffic over a brief period of time, and... Well, I've watched the traffic over a brief period of time, and when you take a facility like Republic Services, what do they do? They accept trash. They accept trash from garbage trucks. They accept trash once a month from the residents of PBD. Anybody who's been around this city knows Saturday morning when it's trash day, you better get there early, because if not, you're going to wait a long time. And it's going to go out, and the queue is going to go out into Route One. That's not safe. Now, I didn't have the time. I know Republic Waste Services, I've gone up there, I've watched it, I've seen. For anybody who understands the trash business, basically, those people who take our trash, they're given a set amount of time. If they can do it in a shorter period of time, they can go home. But more importantly is, is that that trash, unless you know the schedule of Republic Services, and I'll just give an example, if they pick up for a town A on a Monday, town B on a Wednesday, and town C on a Friday, those days, that's backing up to Route One. I've seen it. I know it. It's common sense. So what happens when that happens? Well, people do things that are illegal. It's not anyone's fault, but it's a fact. In your to the judge, you talked about, I brought it up the last time. I said, could lead to further illegal motor vehicle activity in the area, i.e., vehicles cutting through the mobile mart on a regular basis. And your response to that was, if I can find it here with all these pieces of paper, there's something to the effect that I believe it wasn't your fault and you couldn't control that. I'll try and find it. But I don't disagree. But I, as a city councillor, have to be aware of that, and I have to acknowledge that. Uh, so what happens is people cut through the mobile mart. And what's even worse is they then go down a street that's barely can fit two lanes. I'm talking about going off of Route One North, taking a right right after Reds on Forest Street. So they cut through the mobile, and they go in, and they go out, and they take a left onto Forest Street, and hopefully, there's no traffic backed up. But they're going down illegally down that area. As I said, Republic Waste Services, they take trash and that, those trash trucks back up. We heard things about, unfortunately, some people don't play the rules, and some of the truckers don't want to pay to park legally over at the truck parking lot, truck stop. So they go look for other places to park illegally. It's not a good situation. In your, could I ask you, Attorney, where in your, um, application is your site plan?
The, the site plan was submitted under, there are a number of things you've said that I would like to respond to, but answering your specific question now, the, we submitted a, uh, site development permit plan to you under cover, cover letter from our local councillor, Jack Kelty. Um, I think it was in, I, I can pull out the letter, but it was in the timeframe between the mid-December submittal of the application and the January twenty-fourth hearing date.
So.
We, we, there were two, there were two submittals to you. We initially had had an older survey, and then the subsequent letter, we submitted the plan. And I, I have it here. I'd be happy to provide it to you.
And this might be it, I, I don't know. I believe in your documents and your application here before us tonight, I believe it's on the back of page eight. Right after it says appendix, it says project site plan. Is that the site plan?
Uh, that's the old site plan. As I, as I mentioned, between the date that we filed that application and the hearing date, we submitted a modified site plan, which among, well, I mean, the primary difference, the, as I think you know, the work being done on the property is largely being done inside. The work outside really is cleaning up the parking area and striping the parking. And they'll be striping three rows of parking that will total forty-eight, uh, parking spaces, including three ADA compliance spaces, all of which exceeds the minimum requirements for the DDD.
Well, I wish I had that plan, because the only thing I had is on the back of page eight. And the detail that you just gave is certainly not on page eight. And anytime that you submit a special permit application, page thirty-six, it says, "A site plan shall be prepared by a registered architect, registered engineer, a registered land surveyor at a scale of not less than forty feet to an inch, and shall include, as necessary or applicable for each special permit used to following," and goes from item A through L. So I don't have that to look at tonight. I went, and I asked, because I went and I looked, and I drove in the parking lot today, this afternoon, because I have some concerns, and I would have liked to see in a site plan, to see how the parking was going to be identified. Regarding your special permit to operate a trucking terminal with truck repair and maintenance services with no outside storage, so what, what will be outside?
I, I know there was some confusion, uh, about this on January twenty-fourth as well. The reason we noted outside storage was the language in section six point six point four, eleven, and twelve. Um, the, the actual, the only thing that will be stored outside would be the workers' vehicles, one dumpster, which is mentioned in the application. And, um, the, as, as you heard, the thirty-five service vehicles are going to be on road, on the road most of the time, but as workers are coming in off hours for shift changes, the vehicle will briefly be parked there. But there's not going to be storage of other materials.
Yeah, we don't, we don't store any materials on the site. It's basically the workers', um, vehicles.
So I pulled the definition of outside storage from our ordinance. And the definition of outside storage is the keeping of personal or business property or motor vehicles which is not within a structure with a roof, floor, or at least three sides, all of impervious material. Based upon that definition, I'm not a hundred percent sure about the workers, because that's their personal property. I don't know if personal means whoever owns the property. But I certainly don't think that, it says no business property or motor vehicles can be outside. They have to be within a structure. So to me, when you, application, you say there's no outside storage, and now you just said, even if it's a brief period of time, it's going to be outside. So that, to me, is an issue.
So, so forgive me, forgive me, Counselor, so.
I, I just.
Okay, I apologize. I apologize. I just wanted to understand the question.
And then we've talked about the DDD. And we are the, it's permitted with a permit of the granting authority, which is the special, the, uh, city council. So I went and I pulled uses of the DDD. I just want to elaborate and what was Mr. Butler talked a little about, but if you read about allowable use and what needs a special permit, this is on page one fifty-five. Allowable use, research and development. Allowable use, machine shop. Trucking terminal, special permit. Manufacturing light, allowable. Material testing and research, allowable. Medical fabrication, light, allowable. Monument works, allowable. Truck service repairs provided and work inside a building, special permit. Welding shop, allowable. The point I'm driving at is that this is a change of use. This was a light manufacturing facility. This is a tool and die machine shop. And we're changing the use, and we're not just changing it a scintilla, we're changing it to a major degree. And I have no problem with AAA and the things that you do and the services you provide. But what I need to do is I need to look and protect my community. And so when I read that, there's a lot of allowable uses, the one that was there played out perfectly. There's a reason why we do a special permit, because it's not an allowable use. And when they put the DDD together, they had some foresight. There was talk about growth. Uh, I would like to recognize that it has been publicly said by the mayor, the landfill is opening. We are going to generate revenue. He said that, it's publicly said that, so, uh, one of the, uh, neighbors alluded to that, but that is a fact. I don't believe that is involved in the traffic study. Um, expedite is, I don't also believe that is in the study. So I can go many ways, and I can get factual on you and things like that, and I have no issue doing that. But I really want to go back to some of the words that both of you gentlemen used, because I think it's really pertinent. Attorney Squires, you said it's an ideal use. I respectfully disagree for the reasons I just went over. Mr. Galvin, you used the word common sense. To me, it's common sense that this is not a good spot for, to run your business. And I can go over two-hundred-page traffic studies, and I can do fifteen-page peer reviews. But I know what I know, and what I know is that it's a safety issue up there. And that, thank goodness, we have the jug handle. If we didn't have the jug handle, some of those sixteen-wheelers coming out onto Forest Street, taking a right, going to Route One North, might never get out. There's a little alleviation because of the jug handles there. If that jug handle goes away, who knows? You also talked a little bit about contractors, and I'm sure the, you brought it up, so I'm going to bring it up. I wasn't going to bring it up, but you brought it up, but you talked about contractors, and you want more and more, and everyone applying. So the people who do work for you, I'm glad that they heard that. But, you know, one of the things I hear in the research that I did is that maybe there's, if you upped your pay scale a little bit, maybe you wouldn't have to come to special council meetings and cry out for more contractors. That's what I hear. So maybe there's a reason why. Not that you're busy, but maybe it's the, the pay scale. Um, and when you talked about what you folks do is you alleviate traffic. Well, I've been on the council for six years. I'm fifty-six years old. I've never had one person call me up and complain and say, you know what, my car broke down, and I can't get someone here quick enough. I've never had it happen. It never happened to me. Now, I'll grant you, from the middle of January, it's forty below, there's going to be a backup. I understand that. You understand that. That person whose battery didn't start understands it. But as far as traffic, I've never, ever heard of anyone calling up anyone and saying, "We have a problem. We can't clear the traffic quick enough." So as much as I want to, uh, buy into that, I, I can't. And then I, I would like to ask the attorney, did you get the rules of the park that Mr. Wood alluded to moments, moments ago? Are you aware of them, and have you read them?
I, I couldn't actually hear him. Um, so I, did he mention rules of Lakeland Park Drive? Is that what he said?
He did.
I have not personally seen them, no.
So I think that's an important thing. Um, you know, to me, um, our last meeting of the, before we went into the summer break, back on July eleventh, we approved a trucking terminal. So we're not against trucking terminals, but we approved it at Centennial Industrial Park. We didn't approve it on a street, at the end of a street. And there's a big difference. And as I said, the site plan that they provided that night, I could see where the parks, everyone's going to park, but there's no outdoor storage, so I don't know how you can park your vehicles outside when you're not supposed to have any outdoor storage. Um, so as I said, I'm not against AAA, but when you talk common sense, I agree with you. And common sense is, this is trying to put a square peg in a round hole, and it's not going to work here. At this point, I will be voting against it this evening. I will rest and allow my fellow councillors to ask any questions that they need. Thank you.
May I respond?
Yes, you can, sir.
Thank you. Uh, so first, I'd like to point out that the city did retain a traffic engineer, uh, Ken Cram from Bayside Engineering, who did a careful review of the traffic impact assessment, and as I mentioned earlier, agreed with the findings. He had some comments. We responded to all of those comments. Uh, Jeff Dirk, our traffic engineer, spoke with Ken Cram today and confirmed he didn't have any further comments. So I think that's important. I also think that we're conflating things here. We're not talking about tractor trailers. We're talking about F-150s. And we're talking about thirty-five of them at peak, um, more likely twenty-eight, uh, F-150s. So we're not talking about tractor trailers parking on the road. We're not talking about tractor trailers turning onto Route One. We're talking about F-150s. And we're talking about an increase of roughly a half a percent to one point four percent in the traffic, which will result in less than a one-second delay during peak hours, turning right onto Route One. In addition, it will result in either no or up to one vehicle queue. So I, I think it's misguided, quite frankly, to suggest that this is a traffic problem. I've spent a significant portion of my career, I'm an environmental land use attorney, citing landfills and transfer stations. I can tell you, this is a dream location for transfer stations. It's very difficult to find places in the Commonwealth, particularly places close to major routes like Route One, uh, where you can cite a transfer station as-of-right. And I can guarantee that the traffic impacts from that as-of-right use, which may very well be the most profitable use of the property, uh, if, if it weren't being occupied by AAA, uh, I can guarantee that the traffic impacts from that would be much more significant. You'd be dealing with tractor trailers, larger trucks. So I, I think those are the things I wanted to respond to. There, there is no outdoor storage. There are some vehicles that are parked very briefly. They're not going to be parked overnight. I don't think any definition of outdoor storage could possibly contemplate that, given that, uh, you know, we're talking about a couple of vehicles at a time, or workers' cars. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Gravel.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, first of all, um, for the record, I'm a AAA member as well. So is all my family. Um, but, uh, a couple of things. One, I haven't observed that, that site for forty-eight hours in February. I go through there almost weekly and daily. And between Reds Diner and getting out onto Route One and, uh, transfer stations, I don't, I don't see how anybody can say that's not a difficult area. And on a Saturday morning, I, I couldn't agree more with Councilor Sasso. On a Saturday morning during trash day, uh, when you can bring your, your big stuff to the, to the containers, unbelievable the amount of traffic that's there. Second, you know, I appreciate your citing, your background in traffic studies. I got to tell you, when we were reconfiguring Main Street, they had this really cool application, and it had little red dots traveling along Main Street, because we were going to reconfigure from four to two. And the biggest concern of all of us at that time was what's going to happen to the traffic, and the traffic study said, I guarantee you, there's not going to be a problem, you know. This is, look at this. Moves slowly. We even have, like, independent little dots that move erratically to kind of show us what regular people do. And, um, I want you to find me somebody in PBD that would agree with that traffic study today, who sat on Lowell Street for twenty minutes, or sat on Main Street for twenty minutes, uh, waiting to get through. Best day for me was the day I moved my office from Main Street to Centennial Park, because I didn't have to listen to my employees complain about how long it took to get from the exit on one twenty-eight over to down the end of Main Street. So traffic studies are great. Kind of lost all my faith in traffic studies, um, based upon that. Um, and, and, and I, I don't think that, you know, you can accurately say at any given time it's so many per seconds, because the world doesn't operate that way. You know it, and I know it. If I get fifteen of them at once, there's more than a few per second. If I get two of them, there's fewer than a few per second. So I, I just hate to rely on and say, wow, this traffic study said there's not going to be a problem. And, I mean, I've lived here all my life. That area is a problem. It's gotten worse because there's a lot of traffic down there, so. Um, it's a cut-through to get to Route One, and that pushes a lot of traffic that you wouldn't normally expect. You might have got a great day, when, a great forty-eight hours, but I can tell you, as a resident, it's been here a long time, you may not see that in a different forty-eight hours. Thank you.
Councilor Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, thank you for the presentation. Um, and thank you to the neighbors and the, it's very rare when you see residential neighbors and business, and the business neighbors together on the same page on an issue. Um, you know, I, since this came up, a couple, six, eight months ago, uh, I've gone by there a few times, just to observe it, the actual location where they, where they are. And I can't help but think that that, if you look at the Lakeland Park and Forest Street, down in Jubilee and all through Centennial Park, most of the trucking terminal stations are the heavy commercial, they go directly out into the street, and that they're, they're formulated specifically for that purpose. This one's a little different because it's tucked in the back. And you can tell that the, when it was originally formulated, And you can tell that when it was originally formulated, and the building and the previous ownership, it was based on light industrial. I don't think they ever had the expectation that they would need to get a lot of trucks, a lot of vehicles, and by a lot... I mean, 40, 38, 38 vehicles, I think you mentioned?
35.
35. Essentially, there's a couple of choke points that they'll be coming out of to finally get onto Forest Street. One is with their neighbor at the Green Works. Then it merges with Lakeland Park, where there's actually three different businesses meeting at the same point, coming out, and then ultimately up onto Forest Street and either taking a right or a left. So, you know, I had an open mind. I think I would like to see AAA in Peabody. I have no issue with your business practices or your business being in the city. I just, to me, it's a square peg around hole problem. It might not be the best location for that purpose. And, you know, I think as an elected official, you know, I do have to take into account the business community and the residents that abut that area and their concerns. So, you know, my previous vote on this was against it, and I haven't seen anything that would change my mind on that. But I just, I do take your business practice seriously, as well as I take the concerns of the residents, and just doing my homework. And I'm frankly trying to be cynical to myself, trying to find a solution or to find a way that it might work. I just didn't see it. Thank you.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lifelong AAA member since I've been driving, so thank you for your services and what you do for people in Peabody. I'll be real brief. Enough is enough on trucks. Mr. Butler, who has lived with the Prudhose through the trucking terminals and various iterations of trucks that come up through Centennial Park, right down Jubilee Drive, go to Farm Ave, and then onto Forest Street, back and forth all day long. I just don't think it's the right spot, and I'd love to find another spot for you, so I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Counsel, your rest.
Thank you, Counsel. I just wanna clarify some things that were said, and one that you weren't able to answer, but I just wanted... Mr. Woods mentioned that there's no truck activity on Sundays. Are you not aware of that, or are you aware of that?
Again, we're talking about Ford F-150, essentially passenger vehicles, so we're not talking about tractor-trailers. I haven't seen, as I mentioned, the document that he's referring to, and I couldn't actually hear him when he was speaking. But I can't imagine that they're talking about passenger vehicles with that restriction. Again, I'd like to point out that these are not only F-150s, but the very nature of AAA's business is designed to avoid having their workers come into and out of the facility during peak traffic periods, because they need to be out on the road servicing their clients.
And is your flatbeds F-150s?
Yes.
The flatbeds are F-150s? Because I drove an F-150. They're not that big, so I can't imagine a flatbed is.
So we order the vehicles directly from the factory. They take several months to be built. We bring them to Jordan, and they're modified. All our vehicles are currently diesel, Ford F-150s. We are experimenting with some other vehicles. Tractor-trailers and the discussion of tractor-trailers has absolutely no impact. That's not us. It's not the business we're in. We do not own a single tractor-trailer.
And again, I'm sorry, I didn't make this clear also. I am a AAA member.
Thank you.
My wife and daughters are both AAA members. I appreciate the work that you folks do. My question is, and another question on that, and I'm not talking about tractor-trailers either. I am talking about the flatbeds. I am talking about the tow trucks, because I find it surprisingly that they're F-150s anyways, but still, they will have commercial plates on, correct?
They do have commercial plates. We are a business, so they have to. And they are modified, so let me be clear. The one you would buy at a dealer would not have the same lift power or strength that the ones that we order specially.
And the other question that... You mentioned that it's important for you to, you folks, to be out on the road before traffic stops, right? And you're not really at base throughout the day, just except for trips coming in and switch-offs sites. But it's important for you to be out there. So if that's the case, explain it to me so I can understand. Why is it important that you have that particular location and not a location that other... That you will be able to get out just as quick, maybe a minute or two minutes longer if in the industrial park, and things of that nature?
It's a great question. The reality is, the quicker we can get to the scene of a breakdown, right, the quicker we can impact it. If we show up on the scene two hours after a call, members are really angry. We show up 10 minutes after a call, members are really happy. And we alleviate traffic quicker if we show up 10 minutes. Traffic backs up worse if it's two hours. So we ideally plot out exactly where the calls come from. Traffic patterns change over time. In the last several years in the north of Boston area, we've seen changes in traffic patterns. So we've had to adjust the number of vehicles we have in certain areas of the state to make sure that we're getting there as quick as possible. This is a particular location that affords us the ability to get to the scene of a high volume. The vehicles will not be in Peabody all that much, right? Most of the time, they're gonna be out on the highways, and they're gonna be dealing with breakdowns. But, you know, if we do get calls in Peabody, and they'll come to Peabody whenever we get a call, and I think we got about 12,000 last year. But the vehicles aren't actually not in the city. It's just an ideal location to minimize drive time. We could move a fleet location out 20 minutes from here, but then to get to where the calls are gonna be every morning, every shift, it's gonna be 20 minutes to get to where the action is and 20 minutes to get back. It reduces our response time and our effectiveness. So that's fundamentally, we try to put them... You know, we own some property in Manhattan, right? The average speed in Manhattan right now is 6 miles an hour. We converted a piece of property to a fleet operation so we could get to the scene quicker. We had to put more vehicles in Manhattan to be able to get to the scene of breakdowns faster. May not... Is it the right use of property in Manhattan? God, no. But we're a membership organization. We're not for-profit. We're here to make sure we serve our members, so we do it. So the idea is, locations may not be... The best use of a piece of property in 54th Street, between 8th and 9th Street in Manhattan, is not having tow trucks in it, all right? You can imagine that that piece of property is probably worth an awful lot of money. But we do it because it's the right thing to do for members. We view it the same here. This is the right location for us to serve our members.
And so you're saying a half a mile radius around that spot wouldn't give you the same service time? Because your trucks...
If there are other...
You said your trucks are out on the street already.
We employed some brokers and some real estate people to look at locations. If there's another location a half a mile away that qualifies, you know, we'd be open-minded to it, but we didn't find one, and we didn't find one for sale.
And there's one other final question. You talked about the contractors that you use to service, and you don't want to cut away from that. And I'm not, would not be voting on competition, because competition is great for America, right? But you have a, I believe, a person who services AAA members right across the street, and I think just down the street also.
We have hundreds, and the fact that we're housed here doesn't mean it takes away any calls. And then, again, as traffic patterns change, volume, our volumes change. The reality of our business is, you know, forgive me, I'll be fairly blunt. In the world, there's haves and have-nots. Haves change their cars out every three or four years. Have-nots keep them till they break down. Our number of breakdowns are increasing nationwide, and they're increasing in our club. Average age of a vehicle we service is 11.6 years old, and it's increasing every year, right? So people hang on to their cars longer and longer, and that means they break down more and more. So, you know, we're seeing increased demand, and we're seeing traffic patterns change and the nature of that demand change. We're not trying to replace any contractors, you know?
And I don't think you are. I don't believe you are, all right? I believe you on that. What I just can't seem to understand, if you're saying your vehicles are going to be out on the street, the roads, when traffic is going, and that's what your premise is, that you're not gonna increase traffic, and I'm not really looking at that, then if they're out already, and if there's a...
You just need more of them.
Most, a better spot, then why is this spot so important?
If I could find a better spot, I'm game, you know? But we didn't. We looked for a long time. We've been looking for a year and a half. This, we felt this was an ideal location based on the traffic pattern.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Mitsoulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also am a AAA member, along with my two daughters and my wife, and we get the discount. And I have two old cars, and believe me, AAA is not making anything off me. You know, we're doing pretty well with AAA. They've treated us well. When you started this evening, you know, the first thing you said, "You approve this permit this evening, and it's over. If not, we're going to the next step." Listen, I know AAA doesn't come here and threaten us. You know, I could take it that way, but of course, I'm not going to. But I do know, at least I feel like you're not gonna give up on this, and it is gonna go to the next step. And this evening, I came here with an open mind. I said, "I'll sit here and I'll listen, and if you convince me, you know, I'm gonna go your way. And if you don't convince me, I'm gonna go with the neighbors that got up to speak." And to be very honest with you, you did not convince me. When we talked about the traffic, Dave brought up an issue about downtown Peabody. I can remember when all that happened. I can remember when we changed from one lane to two and the mess that made. So do we believe traffic studies? I don't know. Traffic is always gonna be an issue. But I also am very aware of the DD zoning, and I honestly believe that we should have light industry on that property, in those properties down there. I believe that light industry belongs there, much more welcoming than AAA and your fleet of vehicles. So I really don't wanna say much more, because I do know where this is gonna lead to, and we'll probably end up in court giving our piece, all of us, you know? So I'll say as little as I can. I am not for this, and I just wanna be upfront with you, and I wish you luck finding another location, because I honestly believe that that is not the right location for your business. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel. Are there any other counselors? Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like many other counselors that felt compelled to disclose that they are AAA members, I am also a AAA member. You know, and I just wanna state, because of the way this has come back before us, that there was nothing arbitrary or capricious about my vote, and I don't believe there was about any of the votes of my peers on the council the last time this matter came before us, and I don't believe there will be anything arbitrary or capricious with respect to how this matter is handled tonight by this council. I also came here, as Counselor Mitsoulis said a moment ago, with a very open mind to try to understand what has changed. But I will say that the primary focus on traffic really was not all that compelling to me. That was not my sole reason for the position I took on this issue previously. And I think it's been stated well by a number of the residents and business owners. I mean, there is a... They've got one kind of safe haven day up there on Sunday, and I, as somebody that lives in an area that's relatively congested, when you have some period of peace and quiet, there is tremendous value to that. I think that, you know, people do have a right to the quiet enjoyment of their property, and so that has significant meaning to me. You know, there seems to be a lot hinging on the mix of the vehicles between F-150s that are, I guess, on the smaller end of the vehicle scale and larger vehicles that would be involved. But there's nothing that says that that mix won't change over time as requirements change. I don't know if that's inevitable or not. I would imagine you would adjust that based on the demands of your customer base that you serve, or your membership base, maybe more accurately. But I think basing a decision on a set mix that exists at a moment in time that could be subject to change six months from now, a year from now, is not taking the long view. And frankly, the, you know, the presentation that was made at the... Back when we originally heard this, and then again tonight by FedEx and some of the other existing businesses that are gonna... Believe that they're gonna be adversely affected by this. That's very compelling to me. These are businesses that have been here for a significant period of time, that have been delivering great value, and I have no doubt that it's AAA's intent to do everything that you said you would do. But I don't... I have a hard time saying that bringing that in at the... Potentially at the expense of existing ongoing operations makes a lot of sense to me. So as I think others have suggested, I don't think anybody is particularly negative AAA per se. I don't think that's... I hope that's not the takeaway at all, because I don't... That's not my intent to deliver that message, and I did not really hear that from any other counselor. It's just that where you have done a site evaluation and believe this is an ideal location, I respectfully disagree with that, and, you know, would love to see you be able to get that closer proximity that you're looking for, but not at this particular spot. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the record showed, in January, I voted against granting this special permit, and like other counselors have commented, I also came into this hearing with an open mind, did review both the applicant's traffic study, consultant's study, as well as the peer-reviewed one. However, at the end of the day, the neighbors' testimony, both the residents and the commercial butters, was very compelling. And at the end of the day, adding, in my opinion, adding this call center and truck center terminal to this particular piece of parcel will be injurious to the area. We already have challenges in that particular spot, has been well described tonight. I just can't support this special permit at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Manny Man.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll lead with a question regarding the residents on Jubilee. Would it be possible for your F-150s, not your flatbeds, they're small trucks? Pickup trucks, right? Pretty much? Yeah. Would it be possible to, if you were to prevail at whatever point in this process, for you folks to require a left turn only, so that when they're leaving that site, they would take a left and go on to Route 1?
The only... You know, I think we'd be open-minded to restrictions if it would get the motion passed. You know, it could take a little longer if we had to take a left turn and get over one if, in fact, we were trying to service a member in Peabody who lives in the other direction. But, you know, I'm sure we could work something out.
Right, and I suggest that because, you know, you mentioned you have 52% of residents over 18 are AAA members. It sounds like all of us here are, I am.
Thank you.
Right. So if at any point throughout this process, whatever road you all plan to take, I would appreciate and strongly recommend, should you prevail at any point, that you have a... You welcome a left turn only, and take a little extra time to get to people who you're servicing, who are AAA members, to give the residents on Jubilee Drive a break. Their concerns are not made up. They're not in their head.
No, I agree.
And if you truly feel that this is the place that you want to be, that is the ideal location, and you wanna service Peabody, and you want Peabody to welcome you, and that... location, and you want to service PBD, and you want PBD to welcome you, and that you are very charitable to PBD social service agencies, which you've indicated, I want you to as well be cognizant of the needs of the residents who live here. They may even be AAA members, but they have to deal with that type of traffic. So if at any point you prevail, I would strongly encourage you to have a left turn only there because that seems to be, to me, one of the major sticking points with many, which has been mentioned by my colleagues here. And I as well came here with an open mind. I did vote, as did the rest of the council initially when this came up, against the petition. However, I was on the fence. And at this point, I have been convinced, you have convinced me. My colleague here has done a stupendous job researching and pointing out many reasons why he feels adamantly that this should be opposed. And I commend him for that. He's done a good job. And along with my colleague, Counselor Mitsoulis, I'm not going to tick off the reasons why you've convinced me because you're clearly taking this to Land Court. And frankly, we don't have a very good track record in Land Court. And I see you prevailing. So I'm not going to tick off the reasons why. You have attorneys that you pay very well for that. So I will be supporting this. And again, I commend my colleague for fighting the good fight. I just don't agree with this. And I will be supporting the petition. Thank you.
Counselor Sassla.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions before I wind it down here. On the traffic, the motor vehicle crash summary that's in the report, did that, I read here, it says noting that the PBD Police Department data does not include crashes with the Massachusetts State Police was the primary spawning agency. So is that correct, that the crash data does not include anything regarding the Mass State Police and then responding to crashes on Route 1?
So just to clarify, there are two tables as you're looking at the appendix of the response to comments letter. One table is based on the City of PBD Police Department data, which does not include the Mass, does not include responses from the Massachusetts State Police, just City of PBD data. The second table is from Mass DOT. The Mass DOT data includes both City of PBD as well as Massachusetts State Police crash data. So it's important that you look at both of those things. The footnote that you're referencing is with specific regard to the City of PBD Police Department data because they don't have access to the state police records. That's why it's important that, because we have a state highway location, that we include both sets of data. So that as you're looking at it, you get a full, comprehensive look at city data, Mass DOT data, which includes state police data. And I think the important thing as you look at those two tables is that the areas where the city responds to crashes, which is Lakeland Park Drive and Farm Avenue, the data is exactly the same. The only difference in the two tables is if you look at the City of PBD Police Department data, at Route 1, there's only five reported crashes. If you look at the Mass DOT data, there's 12 crashes over the same time period. The discrepancy is that the state police data is in the Mass DOT data and not in the PBD data. And that's why it was important that we noted that footnote.
Want to tell me what I should be looking at in this 20-page report? I have no idea what, you said one report has it, one report doesn't.
That's correct.
Can you refer me specifically where?
I can. If you wouldn't mind, I'll just.
That's fine. I can ask another question while I look at that. In addition, while I was looking for that data, and this is, I don't, it talked about 12 crashes, 12 crashes. You said that a couple of times. Once again, I see 15 crashes, which is not a significant difference, but I guess one crash is not good. But I didn't understand why you referred to 12, but it says 15 on your report. So that was another discrepancy I was trying to wrap my head around. I did find the answer, by the way, earlier in the response to one of the concerns the council had when we denied it was the cut through of the mobile. And it says, the response from you folks was, "In addition, the special permit decision erroneously articulates as a basis for denial a concern about potential, quote, illegal motor vehicle activity, end quote, involving cars operated by third parties, dash speculative activity that would fall entirely beyond the applicant's control." Well, I agree with you. It falls beyond you with control, but it's not speculative. It's fact. I've seen it. I know it. And I just wanted to address that.
If I may, I'd like to point out that when we, I agree with the statement we made. When we made it, we didn't yet have a traffic engineer or a traffic impact assessment. If we were to make that statement now, we would also point out that because of the negligible impacts in traffic from the build scenario, that whether residents are or not doing it, the AAA facility would have no impact on that. And certainly, the AAA drivers themselves would not be doing that.
And while I might agree with that statement, it still doesn't disregard the fact that, as I stated earlier, it's a safety issue. And it's certainly not going to become any safer with any additional activity. It's a safety issue today. It'll be a safety issue tomorrow. And I'm not going to support something that can exacerbate a situation that exists today. I, to the engineer, you had said earlier tonight, 12 crashes, 12 crashes, a couple of times, but it says 15.
So if you look at the response letter, so I'll start with the 15 crashes. When we published the original traffic study, which was in June, the state had only released motor vehicle crash data up to the year 2017. So we looked at five years' worth of data up to 2017. So that's, if you look at that report, there was 15 crashes because it included 2013 through 2017 to get us five years' worth of crash data. When we received the peer review comments, they were asked for us to look at the City of PBD motor vehicle crash data to compare it to the Mass DOT data. The City of PBD was able to provide us crash data through the year 2018 because the records are very much up to date. In fact, I could probably get records up to yesterday, essentially, through the city's records. But the city provided us five years' worth of data up to the year 2018. Fortunately for us, Mass DOT also released data through the year 2018 in July. So when we provided the response to your review consultant so that you could have that comparative assessment to look at, you know, data through the year 2018, we updated the motor vehicle crash data, essentially dropped 2013, included 2014 through 2018, get us five years' worth of data, which exactly lined up with the City of PBD Police Department data. So that when we looked at the most recent five years, which got us through 2018, and dropped that one year worth of crash data, essentially 2013, there was 12 crashes. So that's the difference. There was basically, if you want to look at it this way, a reduction in the number of crashes occurring at that intersection, just because one year dropped out, and maybe that was a bad year, I don't exactly know. But the most recent five years of data that Mass DOT has and the City of PBD Police Department data has 12 crashes occurring at that intersection. So that's what the difference is. The June report, which included up to 2017, had 15. And now, as we include the most recent data, there's 12 crashes over the most recent five-year period. That lines up directly with the City of PBD Police Department data. So then, the other question that you had was with respect to the tables. And I don't know if you have the appendix that went with our response to comments. But if you happen to have the appendix that's provided, and I can give you the copy of my report. So there's a table 1A-R. And that table is the motor vehicle crash data, most recent information that we provided. And that happens to be the Mass DOT crash data. So if you look at that, that's the Mass DOT data.
Thank you. Nothing is numbered, so that's okay. I'm going to save time. I appreciate that. But nothing's numbered, so that's okay.
Okay.
I'm fine. I just would like to close with this. Mr. Galvin, I appreciate you coming up. And just as the resident told a little story earlier tonight, I'd like to tell you a story about a company that came before this council and a CEO, probably within the last year. Take away what you'd like. But it was a company called Kelly Nissan. They own many dealerships here on the North Shore. They sell many cars to many people. They showed up, and there was a special permit. The neighbors showed up, and they spoke in opposition to special permit. And gracefully, Brian Kelly, to his credit, said, you know what? I want to be a good neighbor. I want to do the right thing. I want to withdraw. And I don't expect you necessarily to do that here tonight. But you come up here and you talk about nonprofit. Nonprofit, to me, doesn't mean anything. That just means, a lot of people can make money in organizations, just can't show a profit. That doesn't mean anything. But you did talk about charitable contributions. You made a point to talk about that. And I'm not going to ask you if you gave any charitable contributions in PBD in the last year. But I'm going to ask you to think about what Mr. Kelly did. And if you don't get the vote you're looking for tonight, take the money that you're going to have to spend on lawyers to fight this and think about maybe putting that into a charitable contribution. And go find a place that's more suitable for your business. Because as you heard, nothing against AAA. It's just not the right location. You've heard it loud. You've heard it from many different people. And as I said, I understand you own a building. That was not my choice. That was your choice. But as I said, maybe think about taking those dollars that'll be spent on thousands of dollars of attorneys that we all know, $3.50, $4.50 an hour. Maybe taking that money and put it in charitable contributions. At this point, I'd like to ask to close the public hearing.
All in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Sassla.
On the application from AAA Northeast, 110 Royal Little Drive, Providence, Rhode Island, for a special permit seeking to operate a trucking terminal with truck repair and maintenance services with no outdoor storage at 7 Lakeland Park Drive, PBD, Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 6.6.4B, 6.1, 11, 12, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. The matter, excuse me, I, to approve, I vote my, excuse me, I apologize. I make a recommendation not to approve the special permit hearing for the following Regarding 6.1.1, I'm not, site plan requirements I do not believe were met. And regarding the 6.1, 6.2 dot 1. Also, the petitioner has stated publicly that they planned on having outdoor storage for a period of time that is not allowable in our glossary of definitions for outdoor storage. There should be no outdoor storage at any time. And the petitioner stated publicly that they would have some needed outdoor storage for a period of time. Also, I'd like to deny it. 6.1.2, I do not believe the permit will satisfy a local desirable need that its design appearance will be, I do believe will be injurious to the establishment's future character of the vicinity in the neighborhood, and that should be in harmony with the general purpose intent of the ordinance. And I invite any of the councilors who'd like to add any other items where it does not meet the special permit process. They can, so move.
On the motion, I believe a yes vote will be to deny the permit for councilors. Roll call vote.
Counselors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Malville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
No.
Sassla.
Yes.
Shearest.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries. 911 absent.
Counselors, let me take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back and move to item 4C when we get back. Counselors, we're going to move to item 4C on the agenda. The clerk will read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, August 22, 2019, at 7:30 p.m. in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass, on the application from Habitat for Humanity, North Shore, 14 Park Street, Danvers, Mass, for a special permit seeking to operate a retail charitable facility, less than 12,000 square feet, in an IL zoning district, for the retail sale of second-hand general merchandise, such as furniture, appliances, building supplies, et cetera, at 58 Ria Polaski Street, Building 14, Assessors Map 53, Parcel 82, PBD, Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the zoning ordinance. PBD City Council, Counselor John Turco, President.
Could the petitioner please come up to the podium and give us a brief synopsis on what you'd like to do? Thank you, sir. If you could, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Don Preston. I live at 3 Pickett Street, Beverly, Mass. I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity, North Shore. We are one of 800 restores throughout the United States, operating with the guidelines of supplying funds to Habitat to build affordable housing in our communities. The restore in PBD is cited in this location because of its central location to the North Shore and the communities we serve. We sell household goods, windows, doors, flooring supplies, outdoor furniture, lighting, equipment, just about anything that's getting recycled right now when you downsize a house. We have kitchen cabinets, new and recycled. All of this material that we have in the restore right now is donated. If it wasn't in our store, it would be in a landfill. It gets recycled. We have a pricing program. We do not deliver. People come, pick up the merchandise from there. We do pick up. We have a truck. And we service communities from Lynn to Rowley to Gloucester to Danvers, PBD.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Come right up, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Joel Brenner, 5 Alexandra Street, PBD, Massachusetts. Just want to quickly say how happy I am to be a PBD resident by listening to the council and watching this council in action help take a great organization like Habitat for Humanity and help us get us to the point where we are tonight. So I just want to say, as a resident and as a former Habitat board member, I'm very excited about what the council has been able to do to help guide us to this point tonight. So I hope you'll please consider this application in a positive light. And if you haven't been to the restore, I strongly suggest you do. I think most of you have been there and stuff. But it really is a great place, and it's a great purpose in the Polaski Street development. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brenner. Anybody else in the audience here to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody here to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience here to speak in opposition? Anybody in the audience here to speak in opposition? Final time, anybody here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Counselor Mitsoulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this afternoon, I had the privilege of meeting with Mr. Preston. We went to that address, Habitat on Polaski Street. And we walked through the property. The city council allowed him to build up to 12,000 square feet. And what he did was assure me that that is exactly what he did. I was very impressed with what I saw. First of all, I knew the building before they got in there. And it was the old Webster Bag Factory, the plastic bags. And they completely changed it around. They painted the inside. The place looks, I almost felt like I was in either Lowe's or Walmart's. And the goods they had, I couldn't believe. They had new and used. They had new windows, new doors, used windows, used doors. And when I say used, they're almost new. They had all kinds of furniture there. I was just very impressed. And then when we talked for a little while and he told me about Habitat for Humanity, I was very familiar with them because I remember. I was very familiar with them because I remember when President Jimmy Carter was a volunteer with Habitat, building houses. And that's when I learned what Habitat was all about. And Mr. Preston explained to me the whole process of how they do it. And I think we're so lucky to have a place like that in Peabody, that is very charitable to people in need. And I was very proud to be able to say that I voted for this, like the rest of this council, I'm sure feels the same way. And what I would like to do is get them started, because I don't believe many people know about Habitat and where they're located. And so anyone who's watching on cable, you might want to take, take the opportunity and go down and look at the place. And I'm almost guaranteed you'll buy something when you go there. And I give that same invitation to the council who hasn't been there. This is a pretty easy one for me, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I'm far it. Any other counselors have any comments? Please be my guest.
So move. Thank you, Counsel. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I think Counselor Missoula laid it out very well. Everybody remembers how we got here, by creating a new use that could accommodate this. It's certainly now not going to be exclusively for Habitat's use, but it does work well for this. So I think it's great that we're able to come up with this solution, because I know there were some reservations with the original approach to this, and that has now been satisfactorily resolved, which is great. So I'm in full support of this, and I hope that the Restore will be successful at this location. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to thank the Habitat, Mr. Preston, and board members for your patience in going through this whole process that took a long time. And as Counselor McGinn briefly mentioned or alluded to, there was a reason for it. What was brought to us some time ago, I don't know, was it a year and a half ago? Was it two years ago? It was a while ago, about two years ago. It was presented to us as a simple solution to change the zoning in the area down on Polaski to accommodate Habitat. And who wouldn't do that? But as we looked closer, had we changed the zoning as it was presented to us, it would have kicked open the door for all these uses down there that this council did not want. So I thank you for working with us, helping us dot our i's, cross our t's, and ensuring that you did the same, and that we would make sure that down on Polaski Street, it wasn't the wild, wild west. And so you have been very patient. We appreciate that, and we look forward to the Habitat continuing to work down there. And I've been down there, I continue to go down there, and I recommend to folks at home, head on down to the Habitat down on Polaski Street. I think you will not be disappointed. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Just briefly, I'll say, I've been there myself a number of times. As a matter of fact, I was there about two months ago. And I'm a little bit of a political geek, and I bought a Peter Torigi and glass mug with the city seal on it that my wife is extremely happy that I keep on the dining room table for all to see as they enter the house. But I want to say thank you also to Habitat for Humanity and Joel Brenner, who happens to be a dear friend. And hopefully this passes, and I could say congratulations. Roll call, vote. Oh, my apologies. Counselor Missoula.
Yeah, motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Missoula.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit for Habitat for Humanity, North Shore, doing business at 58 Polaski Street, for the purpose to operate a retail charitable facility, less than 12,000 square feet, in an IL zoning district, for the retail sale of second-hand general merchandise, such as furniture, appliances, building supplies, and so on. So move.
On the motion, roll call, vote.
Counselor Missoula.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Sasso.
Yes.
Shearest.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 10-0, 1 absent.
Next on the agenda, Item 4E. I'm sorry, 4D. Mr. Preston, would you like to come back to the podium? Please state your name and address for the record.
Name is Don.
Mr. Preston, my apologies. Our first day back of two months. The clerk must read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Peabody will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, August 22nd, 2019, at 7:30 p.m. in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., on the application from Habitat for Humanity, North Shore, 58 Ria Polaski Street, Building 14, Peabody, Mass., in accordance with Section 24 of the Peabody City Code, requesting a junk dealer's license for the sale of second-hand merchandise at said 58 Ria Polaski Street, Building 14, Peabody, Mass. Peabody City Council, Councilor John G. Turco, President.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Preston, my apologies.
Name is Donald Preston. I reside at 3 Pickett Street, Beverly, Mass. Yes, we're applying for a junk dealer's permit. And as I heard at another application here, I'd rather call it a curated dealer's permit. We are very selective. But the merchandise is furnishings from people's homes, recycled kitchen cabinets, windows, et cetera, and household goods, such as mugs and other kitchen appliances, which we all sell at a heavily discounted price.
Thank you again. Is there anybody here in the audience to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody here in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody here in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience here to speak in opposition? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Counselor Missoula.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A junk dealer's license is, gives them the right to sell whatever goods they have. Goes along with the permit we just gave out. They need this permit to operate, so so move. If anyone else has any questions.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Threw you to the applicant. There was one department response on this, which was from the police department. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that input, which is that they want to make sure that you know, call your attention to Chapter 24 of the city ordinance, which basically is a short section of the ordinance that deals with the sale of second-hand goods. So, you know, the police have just wanted to make sure that you know that's there, that you take a look at it, and that you commit to complying to it ongoing. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other counselors? Counselor Missoula.
I'd like to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Missoula.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to, for Mr. Preston, move to approve a curator dealer's license for Habitat for Humanity, doing business at 58 Polaski Street. It's really a junk dealer's license, so so move. Thank you.
On the motion, roll call, vote.
Counselor Missoula.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Sasso.
Yes.
Shearest.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 10-0, 1 absent.
Counselor Missoula.
Okay, we're going on the next, okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm not ready to give out the permit for this next, this next special permit coming up, because the, one of the parties is not here. And I don't want to deny him, because I'm sure they'll be able to answer my questions. So I'd like to put that off till the next meeting.
So it'll be a motion to continue until September 12th?
That's fine.
September 12th, yep.
So moved.
Very good.
Item 4F. The clerk will read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Peabody will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, August 22nd, 2019, at 7:30 p.m. in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., on the application from Alto LLC, doing business as Alto Forno, 41 Cross Street, Peabody, Mass., requesting an entertainment license for the use of non-live entertainment, specifically television, digital internet music, and radio, at said 41 Cross Street, Peabody, Mass. Peabody City Council, Councilor John G. Turco, City Council President.
Is there a petitioner in the audience? Petitioner for Alto Forno? Is there anybody here in the audience to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody here to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody here in the audience to speak in opposition to this petition? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Counselor Shearest.
Thank you, Council President. I did see earlier the petitioner's attorney here, not too long ago. I'm not sure if there's something that came up to, that he wasn't going to appear. But quite frankly, I, this is the first time I've seen a hearing like this without the petitioner. I ask, you know, I have no problems with this. It's pretty straightforward. But I'm not sure if this, is this have ever happened in the past, that we need to continue this, if any of the other counselors have a, have a problem with it. I have no problem, again, going forward, I have no problem as a council, Ward Counselor, to continue this, certainly if other counselors have some questions to the petitioner. I look towards guidance. I like to do it properly, so.
Counsel, the recommendation from the clerk is to continue with the hearing, in hopes that the petitioner does actually show up. And if by the end of the hearing, that petitioner is not here, we could continue. I'll defer to Counselor Gravel, the senior member.
Yeah, I apologize, but I figured, I'd seen him here earlier. I was wondering if there may be a problem at home with his mom or anything, so I just sent him a text. And he didn't, I guess he didn't understand he was there for Alto tonight. So I would suggest that we continue the hearing until he's here.
I'll go with the recommendation of counsel to continue the hearing until next meeting.
Correct. Is that, Madam Clerk, are you aware, I think we have a tight agenda for the 12th. Can we get this on the agenda for the 12th? Okay, we'll shoot for September 12th. If anything changes, I'm sure you could let the petitioner know.
I will. Are we within a timestamp on this also, for the September 12th?
Correct. Counsel, the clerk recommends we open the hearing and then recess the hearing, so that we're within the 90 days. The clerk will read the notice. Counsel.
I think, didn't you just read the notice? Because I think you also asked if there was anybody here in favor, anybody. So officially, you opened the meeting. So the public hearing is open. So I'd make a motion that we continue the public hearing, or recess, recess the public hearing and continue it for the next regular council meeting.
On the motion.
So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? Continued until September 12th. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Missoula.
I have no motions, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Melville.
No motions this evening, Mr. President.
Counselor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. No motions, but do want to let people know that are watching, that, and the other counselors know, that this Sunday at 2 o'clock, we're going to have a ceremony up at Symphony Park, celebrating the installation of a flagpole up there, but also, more importantly, honoring the memory of Lieutenant Stephen Donaldson, who was killed in Vietnam. And we're going to be having a memorial stone ceremony. So that's 2 o'clock. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, there's a Ward 1, Item 8F. Would you like me to take that?
Yes, Counsel. While I have you, there's actually, I think, three or four of them.
So I'll ask you individually, if you want to.
Yeah, if you could take those, I think a couple of them are special permits.
Yeah.
Sure.
So on the suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8F and approve, all papers being in order, so moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8O, so moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8P and set up a public hearing, so moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8S and set up a public hearing, so moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8D. This is a, and approve, all papers being in order, I'm going to put a condition on this, on this motion, this is related to the sale of some of the properties in the downtown, that this, the...
Counsel, what item number was that?
I'm on Item 9D.
Oh, 9D. Thank you.
So this, the applicant has representatives here tonight, Mr. Kyle Valeri and Ms. Sandra The transaction hasn't closed yet, so I just want to make sure that we're not transferring a license to a, to a party that doesn't own the property. So the condition would be that the effective date of the transfer is the same date of the closing date of the real estate transaction, so moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And on the suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 9H and set up a public hearing, so moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Counsel, I actually have another one here from Ward 1, if you could. Would be Item 8H, if you could receive that from Attorney Schmazinski.
Mr. President, on the suspension of the rules, move to receive Item 8H, so moved.
Thank you, sir. And one additional, Item 8L, from Mr. Smith, from Bartholomew Street. I'd like to refer that, if you could, if you don't mind, on my behalf, referring that to him, ICD, to give Mr. to ICD, to give Mr. Smith his 15 minutes to, to speak on the issue. Counsel McGinn, in reference to the lodging house licenses, the clerk is under the opinion that we, we need to set up a hearing for those, but... The clerk did write "hearing necessary" next to them, so...
Yeah, so that's not on my agenda, hearing necessary. Beg your pardon?
He, he wrote it as a notation on the assistant clerk's paperwork.
Okay, so I guess I'm going to have to undo that early motion, so move for reconsideration on the early motion.
On the motion to receive, that was item nine, excuse me, give me, 9D.
9D.
Motion to reconsider. Roll call vote.
Counselors Mazzullis. Melville.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Shearrest.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries, 8-0, two absent.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 9D and set up a public hearing, so moved.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have received quite a number of phone calls inquiring of the status of the lawsuit in, pending an appeal, Selco Partnerships versus City of Peabody and others, that is pending in land court. And there are a lot of folks who are much more well-versed than I am in following court dockets, and the status of it, and they've been following it. And they've brought to my attention that there hasn't been any stay filed in land court. And I know that the briefs are due on September 17th, just to give you a timeline on what's happening. There are briefs due on September 17th, and then I think after the briefs are filed, 30 days from that, Verizon gets to reply. And then, as it's been explained to me, the process in the appeals court could go anywhere from 18 months to two years. So it's a long process in the appeals court. But they've pointed out that no stay has been filed, and that stay would be in keeping the status quo pending the appeal. Simply because it's in appeal doesn't mean that Verizon cannot put up the cell tower. They could put up the cell tower if they, if they are sick of negotiating with PMLP or whatever, they could, because they want in court to do that, and we're appealing it. So I'd like to make what I think is a harmless motion to make, but a very harmful motion not, if we don't make it, and if a stay is required to file that in land court. So I would like to do that. So I'm going to make a co-motion with Counselor Gravell to direct our attorney in the case of Selco Partnerships versus the City of Peabody and others to file in land court for a stay, keeping the status quo pending the appeal. So moved.
Any questions, Counsel O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not an attorney, it's active litigation. We have had executive sessions on this matter. I would rather have our attorney, city attorney, develop the strategy along with us, rather than in an open session. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Counsel Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate that. And there is a mechanism in place that should the mayor agree with you and feel that this isn't the right way to go, he simply vetoes the motion, and therefore it would not move forward, and it could be referred to the city solicitor, who is our attorney in this. He, on October 3rd, maybe, yeah, October 3rd, 2014, he filed an appearance on behalf of the city, the city council, and each of us individually. So he is our attorney in this. So I do feel it is appropriate for us to make a motion to, to file a stay. And again, the mechanism in, in place is that the mayor has 10 days to veto this, and it would come back to us, or the mayor could approve it and confer with the city solicitor, who is our attorney in this. I know oftentimes he may say, "I don't work for the city council, I only work for the mayor." But in this instance, he is our attorney of record, and he has filed in all our behalf, again, for the city council, for the city, and for each of us individually. I appreciate your concerns, but I think there is a mechanism in place where your concerns would be addressed.
Counsel Gravell.
Yeah, I, I have no problem making a...
My apologies, I gave it, I gave you the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Counsel Gravell.
Just, I have, I have no problem making co-motion on this. I, I think it makes good sense. All we're doing is requesting that the city's attorney provide a stay to ensure that we close a back door for something that could possibly be built. And it gives us more time, gives the city more time to enjoy the fact that there's not a, going to be a booming tower sitting there while we go through the appeal process. I don't think we should take any risk associated with the possibilities that they could put something up. So I'm 100% for it, and I don't think it's an unusual request. I think whether he likes it or not, he, he does say he represents us, and I think, like anyone dealing with an attorney, you have a right to, to ask the attorney to do what you as the client want. And I think, me as a client, I'd like that stay put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, my own objection to the, the motion was that, once again, it's active litigation. We have met in an executive session, discussed this litigation quite a few times, and I think that's the best place to handle it. We shouldn't be negotiating our strategy, and certainly, our attorney, which is the city attorney and represents us, can provide additional color. I would not support this motion, and what I'd recommend is we go into executive session at the next meeting to discuss our strategy. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Counsel Shearrest.
Just for a, a point of information, on the process, of a motion that is made, the, there's a time period, Counsel Manning, I think you, you might have tapped on it, a time period after we make a motion for the mayor to take, to veto it, correct? Or to make, to approve the motion, correct?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Counsel Shearrest, yes. The mayor receives all our motions, and he would veto any, I think he, I think it's 10 days, Allison, is it 10 days? I think, I think it's 10 days. But there is a time period, and I've been vetoed, it's a badge of honor. He has vetoed me at least once. So he, if he vetoes it, it comes back to us, and in most of our motions, Counsel Shearrest, we don't hear anything back from the mayor, because he approves them. So you only hear when he, when he vetoes them. I've only experienced, I think, one in 12 years.
My only statement is, I'm not going to talk about it, because I do believe it's in negotiations, litigation, but I, I do see what you're talking about.
Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think Counsel O'Neill summed it up well. I concur with his position on this. I, I, I would further say that, you know, taking an action and potentially relying on a veto to, to remedy that action is, I, I just, I don't see that as a logical approach, so I won't, I won't be supporting the motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel McGinn. Nobody else? As the Ward Counselor from Ward One, another one of you bothered to discuss it or even mentioned it to me, but I would appreciate that. But with that, I, none of us here are lawyers. We pay free attorneys to handle these cases for us. I'm actually appalled that this was even brought up in open session, that this, this whole case has been discussed in an executive session for a reason, is to not put the city in a, in a, in a bad position. And I couldn't agree with my co-councilors more that this is strictly an executive session. This attorney has kept us in the fight for five years. He's done an exemplary job, and I'm, I'm willing to leave that with him. I, I didn't go to law school, so I don't feel comfortable making a motion to order my attorney to file a stay. I believe he well knows whether he needs to file a stay or not. And to rely on the mayor to veto something that we have, I, I don't believe we have a, a right to even, in order. I just disagree completely. I think that we're sticking our nose in where it doesn't belong. I think that these attorneys have done a tremendous job up until this point. They're the only reason why we're, we're, we are today, and I say we leave it at that. If you, I will follow with the recommendation to bring that to executive session. We'll have an executive session, I'll schedule for the 12th, and Attorney Schmazinski can give his suggestions on whether we do that, but I will not support this motion in the slightest.
Just, Mr. President.
Counsel Gravell.
You have the right to be appalled, but I, I got to say, on, on the basis of you weren't informed, I don't have enough fingers and toes to count the number of things that I haven't been informed about as a counselor-at-large, responsible for an entire city, on issues running the gamut, from all of a sudden finding out that we have some surplus property somewhere, and finding out in the newspaper, to any other issue you want to talk about. So don't be appalled. Any counselor has the right to bring up an issue in motion orders and resolution. You have the right to disagree. But I don't think any counselor needs to be reprimanded for bringing up an issue. And I take offense to a reprimand of that nature. Been here a long time, and certainly don't feel that that was necessary. And if you don't like the motion, vote against it. But for us to ask our legal counsel to take an action is not violating anything in executive session, nor is it violating anything in our rights as a council. That, that works for us. So please, for the record, don't be appalled.
Thank you, Counsel. And I, and I will say, although you don't recommend that I'm, I, I am, I am appalled because I was elected to represent 9 of 10,000 people in Ward One, and there was zero discussion with me. And I'm sorry that nobody's discussed other city issues with you, that's not on me. I'm very open and honest to my co-councilors, I discuss everything with my co-councilors. With that, those people elected me to represent them, I will do that, I feel it should have been discussed with me before it was brought up on this floor. But if, if that's the case, and that's the way that this is going to operate, I still will not support the motion. I will support it in an executive session where it belongs, where it has been for the better part, part of five years. All of a sudden, because it's an election season, we want to bring this out to open session, that's great, but not, not, not with my support. Thank you.
Well, certainly has nothing to do with me wanting to get elected.
Mr. Chairman, point of personal privilege?
Counsel Manning-Martin.
I wasn't going to comment again, but for you to say that this is due to an election year is absolutely laughable, and I take umbrage to that. The fact that this is dragging on in, could be, for two years, in appeal, and we're poo-pooing an idea to provide yet another safeguard for the neighborhood and for the entire city, for this not to happen. It is a harmless motion, as I stated, but very harmful if we don't put a stay in for them to put up that tower, because they can. And if I'm wrong, it's harmless, no big deal. This, you can say it, and you can bang your pots and pans and say that this is supposed to be an executive session, that is a charade. It's an absolute charade to say that this belongs in executive session. We have been sued, he is our attorney, it is a mere step in an appeal process to stop something from happening. It doesn't need to go, be clouded in secrecy in a dark room, in executive session, where only 11 of us get to hear about it. It doesn't belong there. It belongs out here on the floor, it is a simple motion, all the court documents are open, go right online to the trial court, and you can see what's been filed and what hasn't been filed. It's out in open, online, court documents, it's all we're talking about. So there's no secrecy here. It doesn't belong in a, in a little dark room with the 11 of us deciding the fate of the city. It doesn't. Doesn't meet executive session issues, it doesn't violate any court proceedings, and it certainly doesn't violate negotiations that we don't have anything to do with. We are not negotiating with Verizon. For anyone to say that we're negotiating with Verizon, we're not. PMLP is, we aren't. We're getting sued, PMLP isn't. So we're not violating any negotiations. So, and I will close with, after 20 years in office, to say that it's an election year, and all of a sudden I'm bringing up a controversial issue? I don't think the voters of Peabody are listening to that, any of them that have been paying attention. I don't wait for an election year to do my job. That's why I've been here for 20 years. Thank you.
Counsel O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm just going to speak for myself. My comment or concern about this motion was clearly two things. I'm not an attorney, and it has been an executive session since I've been on this council. That's all I was talking about. It's not keeping it in secret. I feel that while it's active litigation, once again, active litigation, it's best to discuss our strategy in executive session. That's where it's been. There's no attempt to be secret, that's it. It's, there's no personal attack here. My concern is the same as yours, that we have the best results for the city, not only the city, but the residents, and that we resolve this matter. I don't think it's the right motion, I'm not going to support it, there are no personal attacks coming from me. I think we should vote the motion. Thank you.
Motion to move the question.
On the motion, roll call vote.
To move the question. Motion to move the question, no debate.
On the motion to move the question. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. On the motion, roll call vote.
Counselors Melville.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Point of clarification, you, Counsel Gravell had asked whether we were doing a, to move the question, so that was resolved, this is on the actual motion then, right?
Correct. This, this would be a roll call vote on Counsel Manning-Martin's co-motion with Counsel Gravell.
Just one, okay, I vote no.
No.
Manning-Martin.
This is on moving the question.
The move the question was all in favor, any opposed? It was a vote to move the question, so now we out?
That should be a roll call on moving the question.
On the motion to move the question, roll call vote.
Counselors Melville.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
No.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Shearrest.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries, 8 to 1, 2 absent.
On the motion, the original motion from Counsel Manning-Martin and Counselor Gravell, roll call vote.
Counselors Melville.
Yes.
O'Neill.
No.
McGinn.
No.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Shearrest.
No.
Gould.
No.
Gravell.
Yes.
Turco.
No.
1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Motion fails, 5 to 4, 2 absent.
Counsel Manning-Martin, you still have the floor.
That is all I have, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Saslaw.
Yes, under suspension of rules, motion to receive item 8B.
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Under suspension of rules, motion to receive item 8V.
That was V as in Victor?
Correct.
On the motion, Counsel, do you want to refer that to the September 12th meeting?
Please, yes, thank you.
To receive and refer to the September 12th meeting. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
And yes, I'd like to make a motion that, I'd like to send it to the Municipal Safety Committee the next time we meet, a motion to look into the possibility of a stoplight at the intersection of Lindauer and Lake Streets. So move. And I'd like to, once again, tell, send that to Municipal Safety Committee next time we meet, whenever that is.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Offset, thank you.
Counsel Shearrest?
Thank you, Counsel President. I'd like the suspension of the rules, move to accept 8M. So move.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
I'd like to make a motion to, under suspension of rules, to move 8R for, and set up a special permit.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
I can make a motion to accept 8V. To accept?
I'm sorry, which one was it, Counsel?
8V. I don't think there's any, I think just move to accept.
B as in boy?
Excuse me?
B as in boy, 8B as in boy?
V as in victor.
V as in victor. That was already received by Counsel Saslaw.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Move to accept and approve item 9A.
Receive all papers being in order, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Great, thank you. And just ask Public Services, which does a great job, to keep mindful that school will be starting very shortly, that they could make sure the crosswalks around the schools to be appropriately painted. And then any, any repairs around the schools that needed to be done prior to school starting, if they would pay, pay a special attention. Nothing in particular that, they do a great job and looking out, so just wanted to make sure. So move.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
And that is all for tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Gould?
Thank you, Mr. President. No motions other than invitation to my fellow counselors to next week's softball game against Salem City Council at Moz Park, 6 o'clock. Love to have you come. Thank you.
Counsel, that's a week from today, Thursday night?
Week from tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel Greville?
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. Under suspension of rules, I'd like to receive items 7, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G and refer them to the Finance Committee.
On the motions, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
I'd also like to receive item 8E and refer it to the Finance Committee.
Counsel, on that 8E, I had that from the clerk as referring that to ICD. Could we refer that to the Industrial Community Development Committee?
Sure. I, I, just, just out of a point of information, I was the one who requested it. That's why I was-
No, I'm aware of it. Thank you. I was just, I, that's what I have here is ICD, so I thought maybe we'd refer that to ICD for discussion. It's-
Yep.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Greville?
I know further motions.
Could somebody, actually, if my co-counselors could assist me with this. We have item 8A from Mr. Spanos. Does that need to go to planning as a zoning amendment change?
Mr. President, I, I thought-
Counsel McGinn?
I think, because it related to, Counsel Greville? Counsel Greville? Because this related to increase in fees, I was wondering if it should go to finance. This is item 8A.
It's a, yeah, we'll take it.
So under suspension of rules, move to receive, I guess we're out of that. Move to receive item 8A and refer to finance. So move.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Could somebody receive item 8C for me?
Mr. President, move to receive item 8C. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Move to receive item 8, is D taken already?
D is, I'm sorry, D needs to be received.
Move to receive item 8D. So move.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Move to receive item 8G. So move.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Move to receive item 8I. So move.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Move to receive item 8K. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Move to receive item 8N. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Move to receive item 8Q and set up a public hearing. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Counsel Greville, item 8U, this was the status of appropriations, I think you had requested, would move to receive and refer to finance?
Send to the Finance, please.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve taxi limousine driver's license, Christopher Crane, license 23, Richard Champagne, license 24, Joseph Neat, license 25, Brian Melyou, license 26, Gary Ferguson, license 27, Hitcham Chabini, license 28, Jackson Geneva, license 29, James Knight, license 30, Gary McDonald, license 31, John Shaw, license 32, Joseph O'Brien, license 33, Michelle Brown, license 34, Paul Vape, license 35, Richard Gill, license 36, Stephen McDonald, license 37, Thomas Barrett, license 38, all papers being in order. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive all papers being in order, item 9C, Ben requests, Shabad, PBD, 682 Lowell Street. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve all papers being in order, item 9E, Use of the Wigan Auditorium, Joey Chisnera, 22 Foster Street, October 19, 2019, and NFI Massachusetts, Inc., 300 Rosewood Drive, Davis, September 27, 2019. All papers being in order. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. And I just have some motions.
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve taxi cab license transfer. Do we need a hearing for this, clerk? No. Move to approve the transfer of license, item 9F, Sunshine Car Service License 26. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Move to approve limousine transfer, Michael's Limousine, license 215. So moved. All papers being in order.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 10A, move to adopt an ordinance, amending the ordinance entitled sewer and water rates of the City of Peabody of Massachusetts Code of the City of Peabody as advertised. So moved.
On the motion.
Can we have a roll call?
Roll call vote.
Counselors Melville?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Manning-Martin?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Shearrest?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Greville?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Motion carries. Nine, two absent.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt item 10B, an ordinance amending Chapter 14, health and sanitation of the Code of the City of Peabody and adopt as advertised. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor. Was there a roll, roll call vote?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Manning-Martin?
Yes.
Saslaw?
Yes.
Shearrest?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Greville?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Motion carries. Nine, zero, two absent.
Thank you, Counselors. On behalf of myself, in reference to Counsel Manning's initial suggestion, I'd like to set up a executive session and discuss that matter with the city solicitor on whether a stay is required. If we could, Madam Clerk, set that up for September 12th, prior to the regular city council meeting. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Also, I have a motion to have DPS check on the water valve and the gas valve that are located on the side of the road of Linfield Street adjacent to Casco Circle in front of 403 Linfield Street. Those valves are continually run over by traffic as they double lane it and the resident has some concerns about the safety of those valves, if they could be inspected. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. I have a motion to have the DPS paint the crosswalk at 388 Linfield Street yellow to make it more identifiable as people come off the rotary. It's a very dangerous crosswalk. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Also, at the same crosswalk at 388 Linfield Street, the pedestrian signs are below seven feet, which is a safety issue for people walking by. If DPS could raise the pedestrian signs at the crosswalk located at 388 Linfield Street. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. This is in regards to a previous motion to install a crosswalk at Joyce Road. That motion's been filed twice. I'll file it for a third time, to have a crosswalk installed at Joyce Road and Linfield Street. On the motion, all in-
How about putting a, put an emergency preamble on that and maybe it'll get some action.
I'd like to file for an emergency preamble on, for a safety issue at Joyce Road and Linfield Street. On the motion, all in favor-
Roll call on the preamble.